On our own, on our branch, right close to that. All right, sorry for the delay. Everybody ready to start?
Ready.
Good evening, I will call to order the meeting of the work commissioners for September 8th, 2025. Please join us in the pledge. Mr. Richmond, will you lead, please?
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to your republic, the Lord Jesus Christ, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Our first item on the agenda for the area plan commission are some ordinance changes, and they all pertain to the R2 multiple family zoning district. The first one is the ordinance to amend Article 10, multiple family R2 district of the comprehensive zoning ordinance in effect for Warwick County, Indiana. And the purpose of this ordinance is to replace Article 10 with a grandfather clause. And the area plan commission, they gave a positive recommendation at their last meeting for all of these ordinances.
So I'll make a motion to approve.
Second.
Are we doing these individually?
Letter A? Yes, please.
And do we have a number? Thank you. Twelve. Twenty twenty-five dash twelve. So I have a first and a second, all in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Here's three zero.
Our next one's the ordinance to amend Article 2, Section 2, definitions of the comprehensive zoning ordinance in effect for Warwick County, Indiana. The purpose of this ordinance was to remove dwelling to family.
What does that mean?
It will leave duplex in there. Right now it has both, and we're just trying to simplify.
Thank you. I'll make a motion to approve item B under ordinance changes.
I will second the motion. I'm going to assume that's thirteen.
Is this?
Twenty twenty-five dash thirteen. Okay. First and a second, all in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Three zero.
We have an ordinance to amend Article 10A, Section 1, 2 of the comprehensive zoning ordinance in effect for Warwick County, Indiana. The purpose of this ordinance is to replace two family dwellings with the word duplex to make it all consistent within the ordinance.
Make a motion to approve item C.
Also known as twenty twenty twenty, twenty twenty-five fourteen, sorry.
Yes.
And I'll second that.
All right, first and second, all in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Our last ordinance is to amend Article 21 Development Regulation, Section 2, Table B of the comprehensive zoning ordinance in effect for Warwick County, Indiana. The purpose of this ordinance is to strike the R2 setbacks from the table altogether.
Hope you understand what that one means.
These are your basic, your principal structure setback table, and since we're doing away with the R2 altogether, we don't need it in the table.
Makes sense. Make a motion to approve twenty twenty-five dash fifteen.
I will second the motion. First and second, all in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Here's three zero. Thank you.
We have our request for extension of surety. It's commercial drive, see twenty oh five six, eleven two hundred, industrial park drive, Woodward Development and Construction. We're holding fourteen thousand two hundred and one in escrow, guaranteeing the construction. They're asking for one year at the same amount, and they've had five. The surety expires November nineteenth of twenty twenty-five, and the county engineer did sign off on the dollar amount.
Yeah, I'd recommend approval. I believe this is for the shell building and industrial park.
Motion to approve C twenty oh five five six.
Second. First and second, all in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Three zero.
Our next one would be Willow Estates Thompson Homes, Inc. by Thompson Thompson, or Thomas Thompson, President. We're holding fifty-two thousand eight fifteen and forty cents for streets drainage and sidewalk construction. They have had ten years, and they're requesting a one-year extension. The surety expires October fifth of twenty twenty-five, and the county engineer and surveyor have both signed off on the dollar amount, but they are suggesting to only allow a six month extension instead of the one year.
Is that from both, just because of the length of time that it's gone on?
And I believe it's all built out.
It's completely built out, and they technically don't qualify for any more extensions due to that.
Okay.
Make a motion to approve the Willow Estates extension for six months.
I'll second. First and a second, all in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Three zero.
Okay. We have several street construction plans. Primary plat twenty-five oh eight, Eppworth Gateway, petition and owner is Deaconess Hospital by Cheryl Wathen, authorized agent. We're approximately sixteen point four acres on the west side of Eppworth Road, zero feet south of the intersection of Eppworth and Schnapp Lane, being tract one, Gateway Center Minor Sub, amended parcel one, and Eppworth Minor Road Sub, parcel one and Gateway Center Minor Sub number two, and gate, part lot one, Gateway Sub, lot three, Eppworth Lincoln Sub four. They, this is in Ohio Township, and they're requesting no improvements to Eppworth Road.
Jim Martin, Jr., project engineer. This is the subdivision we discussed an hour and a half ago, and it accesses all, well, the all interior streets for Eppworth Road, so we can ask for no new road improvements.
Recommend approval.
Motion to approve PP twenty-five oh eight.
Second. All in favor?
Aye.
Next up is PP twenty-five oh nine, grasslands at Turpin Hill. Petition and owner is American Land Holdings of Indiana LLC by Bryce West, VP, approximately one hundred and three point five two acres on the south side of Turpin Hill Road, zero feet east of the intersection of Turpin Hill Road and Madden, Massey Road. Hart Township, twenty-eight, four and eight, complete legal, is on file, and they're requesting no road improvements to Turpin Hill Road or Madden and Massey Road.
Jim Martin, Jr., project engineer. This is the one we talked about about an hour and a half ago. It was recreational ground, three large lots.
Okay.
Recommend approval.
Make a motion to approve PP two-five zero nine.
Second.
First and second, all in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
The next two items on the agenda, I would ask that we just skip over those. We do not need to do anything with them.
Okay.
Our last item would be PP twenty-five twelve, Eppworth Point number two. Petitioner owner is Michael J. and Rita M. Schnur, Eppworth Development LLC by Jordan Eigner, approximately thirty-six point two six acres on the east side of Eppworth Road, approximately thirteen twenty feet south of the intersection of Eppworth Road and Oak Grove Road, being lot one and Schnur, number two subdivision, Ohio Township.
Jim Martin, Jr., project engineer. This is the project on Eppworth Road we discussed, where we are doing a road extension out of the existing Eppworth Point number one.
Recommend approval.
Make a motion to approve PP twenty-five twelve.
Second. First and second, all in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Yes, thank you. So ahead. Items for discussion. Do we have anything on the agenda? So we'll move on to action item. Approve of the minutes from August eleventh, twenty twenty-five.
Approve the minutes.
Second. First and second, all in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Here's three zero. Next is the PTA BOA Board Member Appointment.
Sarah Redmond, she's the one that asked that this be on the agenda. She had given recommendations, I think, Terry, or you all may have had an email of three people. She only gave me one.
She sent me an email that she would be happy with either, well, the first one would be we would approve Dave Rector.
Yes.
To be appointed to that board. And the second one, I had talked to her about Amanda Moisman, and she'd spoken to her, and she would like to have either her or the other person on there. Dave, are you okay with that appointment?
Yeah, Sarah called me.
Yes, sir.
Make a motion to appoint Dave Rector to PTO.
Yes. And then she needs one more.
Oh, okay. Well, let's handle that one first. Is that okay?
So we're appointing two?
She needs two members. So the first is Dave Rector.
Yeah, and if you'll make a motion to second that one, then I'll make a motion for the next one.
I will second the motion for Dave Rector.
We're going to hold just one second here.
I think he thought he was the other person.
Oh, I think you're right. Yeah.
Okay. So first and second, all in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Here's three zero. And then Stacy, you have a?
I would like to make a motion to appoint Amanda Moisman to the PTA BOA.
Second.
First and second, all in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Here's three zero, and she has a board.
Next on the, on the agenda was Peabody's Road Use Agreement. It was tabled from eight eleven and eight twenty-five, and I don't believe anyone from Peabody's here is proceeding to make a presentation, so I would make a recommendation to table it.
Yeah, we're still missing some documents, right away documents.
Then we're not ready to go down.
To release those roads. We don't have those yet. They were going to submit them today with the.
Check, and they didn't.
Check that, what they owe, so I don't know what's going on.
Is that with the rock?
Yeah.
That's with the.
Yeah.
The roads that they're releasing back after they've been rebuilt.
Yeah.
I'm just going to make a motion to remove it to the agenda until we have our documentation.
I'll second the motion. All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Work Security Center Byron.
I'm Byron Sanders. I work for Project Partnerships, and I'm an owners rep for the Security Center project. Well, thank you. I'm here in front of you today. First, I'll give you a little bit of an update. The project is going extremely well. Has scheduled under budget. That's the two key buzzwords as you're trying to find success in a project. And even though the occupancy date was June, July of next year, we're looking at substantial completion by March of next year. And when you come to think about that, for it to be, it to be substantially complete, there's a lot of commissioning and things that we have to test and make sure they're operating properly. That's almost a two-month process, which will kind of lead to what I'm going to ask for approval today. We've already started painting, but painting is going to take three months. So you can get the magnitude of an eighty thousand square foot facility, but we are in those final stages. We see a lot of the major construction activities in the home stretch. And so we're at this point in time, we're starting to purchase some of the owner purchase items. We need to purchase a console desk, custom made, that'll set up in the control room that can see in all the day rooms, the confinement areas. This console desk will have at least six monitors for cameras. It'll have schematics for the locking systems, and they will be able to automatically through their computer operate all these items. We need to get that desk here by the end of the year, so all the cabling and the wires and the computer setups can be brought in and tested. The background on that is the fact that we worked with Tri-State Systems. They're a source well dealer, and I think you're familiar, that's government-created cooperative spending program that leverages their collective buying power. As we were working through this, and since this is a custom-made design piece, and the sheriff and his staff had input of what they liked, the heights, where they're going to stand, and elevations, and the ergonomic factors of the whole process, we got to the final design. Sheriff has gone through them, looked at the design, signed off on them, and the initial quote that came in was fifty-nine thousand some odd dollars. And I thought this was going to be a source well item, so I asked for the source well discount, and we were informed that the supplier, Winstead, was not a source well dealer. But that didn't hinder, Sherry and I, we talked to the vendors, that we still expect something similar to a source well discount. So they did bring it down by sixteen percent. So the total purchase price of this desk is forty-nine thousand five hundred and twenty-eight dollars and twenty-seven cents. I compared the two quotes. Nothing was compromised in the quotes from the, from the pieces and the items itself. The money was taken out of their professional services category. So it's a forty-nine thousand dollar, five hundred and twenty-eight and twenty-seven cent purchase of supply agreement. This is the purchase supply agreement that the council and the sheriff use now, and I've attached that, and I will, if we can get this approved, I'll leave this with Debbie, and we can get this signed afterwards. So that's my request, that we get it approved, this custom-made console desk. Any questions?
I don't.
Was anybody else involved other than Winstead?
Winstead was their supplier, which confused us. I thought it was Tri-State Systems, but they also provided the custom-made desk for Gibson County, and typically they select a vendor and work with that vendor to develop the drawings because it's custom-made. We couldn't have the architect do the drawings because they would have been basically useless without, with all the specifics necessary. But no, Winstead was their supplier. We had no option in that selection process. But I felt that they needed to come to the table a little bit further. I don't want to walk down the road and just say, okay, here's our price, and wait a minute, where's the, where's the source well discount? And I understand that, but we still, we still, we would have, we would have stopped and restarted at the beginning again if we'd, if they would have not shown some good faith effort. Okay?
Do we need the motion? Do you approve it? I will make a motion to approve the console desk.
Second.
First and second, all in favor? Aye. Aye.
Thank you very much.
Thank you.
As we're in the final stages, we'll be in front of you quite a bit the next few months and for similar purchases, but we'll give you the background and the data and do it correctly.
I appreciate it. Thank you.
Okay, there, the pink is where they can sign. I just have those things for us.
Yeah, okay. Okay, first item on the agenda for my part is the payroll voucher number eighteen in the amount of six hundred and seventy-nine thousand, six hundred and ninety-seven dollars and eight cents. I need approval of the payroll voucher.
Make a motion to approve?
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Next is the accounts payable voucher for period ending September eighth, twenty twenty-five in the amount of two million, four hundred and thirty-seven thousand, four hundred and fifty dollars and twenty-three cents. Need approval.
Motion to approve.
Second. First and second, all in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Next is the county treasures report for the month of July, actually. Yes, not the July twenty twenty-five. Approval of county treasures report.
Motion to approve.
Second. All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
The next is the approval of the next claim, number twenty-three, for Warwick County's Security Center, and it's in the total amount of one million, four hundred and fourteen thousand, one hundred and five dollars and forty-one cents. And that goes to several different vendors.
Motion to approve.
Second. All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Three zero.
The next group together are the approval of the opioid contracts from the applications you approved at the last meeting. Chandler Volunteer Fire Department, twenty-seven thousand four hundred. Newburgh Volunteer Fire Department, twenty-seven thousand four hundred. Pigeon Township Volunteer Fire Department, twenty-seven thousand four hundred. Skelton Owen Fire Territory, twenty-seven thousand four hundred. Newburgh Girls Softball, twenty-five thousand, and Cancer Pathways Midwest, twenty-five thousand.
Did we communicate with Newburgh Softball?
Yes, I did.
Thank you. And they?
Yes.
So is that why we're redoing these ones?
No, this is the contract. Last month, you, last meeting, you approved their application.
Okay. I'll make a motion to approve.
Second.
First and second, all in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Okay, the next item is the parking lot resolution for Orthopedic Drive. Last, the last meeting, you did vote to have a resolution prepared for the parking size, but there was never a motion to, the motion was to draft the resolution, but the resolution itself was not passed. So I'm bringing it back to you to make it resolution twenty twenty-five oh four.
This is for no parking on Orthopedic Drive. Motion to approve resolution twenty twenty-five oh four.
Second. First and second, all in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Here's three zero.
The next, April, did you want to come up, or do you want me to handle these? Or I'll go with you? Okay. She's been busy. These are the two interlocal agreements with Vanderburg County for the H, part of the HFI funding given to the Health Department. There are two different interlocal agreements. Each of them is not to exceed twenty thousand dollars. One is for the pre-to-three program, and the second is for the STD infection testing and treatment program.
So we've been partnering with them for COVID days, right? Correct. Do we have plans in the future to be able to do at least the, like the STD testing?
Yes, and we did find out that we do have an active CLIA.
Okay.
Certificate. So that should only take a few months to get in place. What our hopeful next step is, we would like to have a private bathroom at some point.
Sure.
To facilitate that to the best of our ability, that testing, but it's in the works.
So a motion to approve either both or separately?
Make a motion to approve both the pre-to-three and the STD infection testing and treatment programs partnerships with Vedward County.
I will second the motion. First and second, all in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
And that is all I have. Thanks.
Sherry Severs, Work County Acquisition Administrator. The first item on my agenda is ratification of contracts tonight, and the county council has taken a positive step by approving funding, funding for the surveyor's office to secure vital new equipment, which they did approve a twenty twenty-three Fint FT five sixteen G three diesel tractor, hurricane ditcher, and a seventy-inch forest brush cutter. Today, I'm pleased to present two purchase agreements that require the support of the commissioners, as well as the signature of Commissioner President Sarah Seton, to move forward with the acquisition and to ensure timely delivery of the important equipment. I would like to present the first. I would like to present the first agreement for consideration to the commissioners, which is a hurricane ditcher, or is, the contract is with Hurricane Ditcher Company located in Vincennes. This agreement is for a total of $115,932.54, and it encompasses the procurement of a hurricane ditcher. The package includes electric hydraulic hose kit, auto clutch, PTO, and GPS equipment. Your approval and execution of this agreement would be greatly appreciated. That's up to you.
Motion to approve the contract for the hurricane ditcher.
I'll second the motion.
First and second all in favor?
Aye.
Thank you, commissioners. The second agreement for consideration by the commissioners is with Ag Revolution LLC located in Henderson, Kentucky. This agreement is for a total of $237,141.36 for the procurement of a 2023 Fint FT 5516G3 diesel tractor with a 70-inch TMG forced brush cutter. Your approval and execution of this agreement would be greatly appreciated.
Make a motion to approve?
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Thank you, commissioners. And I would also like to recognize Dennis Will Sparker for his hard work and commitment and his efforts, I'm sure will be greatly appreciated by the citizens of Warwick County getting those ditches cleaned out. The next item on my agenda is presentation of funding for MAC, the new MAC trucks. And I think you've got this before you too. The Highway Department is scheduled to have three new MAC trucks with spreaders, salt spreaders, snow plows, and sand spreaders delivered on May 30th, 2026. The total purchase price was $802,875. To facilitate this purchase, Bobby has allocated $215,000 in this year's budget for down payment to reduce the cost. We have contacted the following financial institutions to give us some options for financing. Those institutions were Old National Bank, Linville National Bank, Peoples Trust and Savings Bank, and MAC Truck Financing through all MAC Truck sales. We received two proposal letters, one from Old National Bank, and the others from Peoples Trust and Savings, which I have included in the commissioners' packet. I've listed the terms of each below. Old National gave us a 5.11% interest, term of the loan is five years, but six payments. And it's important to note that sixth payment is due like July of this year, which takes quite a bit of interest off of your amortization schedule by going five years, six payments. The annual payment would be $111,233. Old National does have a 2% prepayment penalty, which means you pay it off early. One year early, that's $2,115 and some change. Two years early is $4,126 and some change. They have $3,000 in loan fees, and then I'm showing you the total interest on the loan, $79,524.33. Peoples Trust, same interest rate, same program, five years, six payments, same annual payment, just a little bit different pennies on that. And I imagine that's just their amortization schedule, what their bank could be just a little different. There is no prepayment penalty, so if we pay it off early, there's no prepayments that we're going to be charged for. And their total loan fees are $1,066.5. The difference between Old National and Peoples, they're sending their legal work out, so they have to pay outside legal. Peoples has inside legal counsel, so that's the difference. Peoples has also given us a second option at 5.25%, six years, six payments. I have received confirmation from both banks regarding the payment details for the vehicles. We do not need to make a down payment of $215,000 before the vehicles are delivered, May 30th, 2026, to secure the financing. This arrangement will allow us to manage our finances more effectively. Both institutions are offering financial, finance planning that spans five years and consists of six payments. Six payments, the first payment due July 1st, 2026, with each payment due the same date every year. Additionally, Peoples, again, has offered an alternative plan with six years. At this point, I believe it would be beneficial to consult Bobby, because he can provide valuable perspective before the commissioners make their decision.
Pay it off early like normal?
Yep. Can at least get one year early. I've been crunching it to see if two years early.
This decision easier? With Peoples, so he wouldn't be penalized?
Saving loan fees and pay off early, so.
Okay. So do I have a motion?
Make a motion to accept Peoples Trust and Savings.
Five years, six payments.
The five years, six payments.
I'll second.
First and second all in favor?
Aye.
Thank you, commissioners, and I do have a letter of offer in here that will require Commissioner Seton's signature, and I'll make sure Debbie has that. The next item on my agenda is transfer of sheriff vehicles. A sheriff vehicle from the sheriff's department to the parks department. The sheriff's office has kindly donated, wanting to donate to the parks department, a 2020 Dodge Durango, last four vin A788, which has 60,000 miles on it. I understand that this vehicle does not need to be declared surplus, since it's being transferred between county departments. However, I would like to respectfully request the commissioners' approval for this transfer to ensure transparency and compliance. The Durango will serve as a replacement for the 2010 Toyota Highlander that currently has 180,000 miles on it. The Highlander was donated to the parks department by Toyota, cannot be licensed, because when they built it, they took it apart, they built it again, and because of that reason, it's not able to be licensed. We just used it within the park. I'm currently evaluating the options for surplus of the Highlander. I have reached out to Universal Salvage, and they can pick it up and give a scrap price of 300. Furthermore, I have reached out to Mr. Kraining at BHS, who's the head of their automotive program, to inquire whether they might find this vehicle useful in teaching, taking apart and putting it back together. I will keep the commissioners informed and provide an update once I have had the opportunity to speak with Mr. Kraining directly. At this time, I will present the commissioners, at that time, I will present the commissioners that particular vehicle for surplus with your specified options. So I just need the approval of transferring from the sheriff's department to the parks department.
Motion to transfer the 2020 Dodge Durango from the sheriff's department to the parks department.
Second.
Thank you, commissioners. I do have one other thing that I.
That's okay.
All in favor?
Thank you, commissioners, I apologize. One other thing, it's not on the agenda. I do have a form here from Five Star Security that I need to have signed. And basically, all it is, is a subscriber data sheet stating who you want the contact to be in the event the panic button or duress system has to be put in place. So, and it's just their contract of who the contact people are. And with your permission, then I'll leave that with Debbie as well. Thank you, commissioners.
Nothing.
Sheriff, nothing?
What?
Nothing.
Nothing? So items for discussion?
For commissioners.
Yes. So I have two things, I guess. First, I'll go with just the announcement. On behalf of the commissioners, that effective immediately and until further notice, Van Park and Amex Fields, including the baseball and softball fields and pickleball courts, will be closed to the public. This decision follows guidance from the Environmental Protection Agency, which has confirmed that it is continuing to monitor environmental conditions in the area and developing a response plan. We appreciate the community's understanding and cooperation as local, state, and federal partners continue their work to assess conditions and ensure public safety. Along the same lines, I do have a local disaster emergency declaration to read. Whereas Warwick County, Indiana, has been impacted by a significant chemical fire, which constitutes an emergency condition, and whereas pursuant to Indiana Code 10-13-3-29A, a local disaster emergency may be declared by President of the Board of Commissioners of Warwick County, Indiana, as Principal Executive Officer of Warwick County. And now, therefore, Sarah Seton, as President of the Board of Commissioners of Warwick County, Indiana, declares that a local disaster emergency exists in Warwick County and hereby invokes and declares those portions of the Indiana Code that apply to the conditions and have caused the issuance of this proclamation to be in full force and effect in Warwick County for the exercise of all necessary emergency authority for protection of the lives and property of the people of Warwick County and the restoration of local government within a minimum of interruption. The effect of this declaration is to activate the response and recovery aspects of all applicable and county disaster emergency plans, authorize the furnishing of aid and assistance under the plans in pursuant to IC 10-14-3-29.5. Declare, if necessary, a warning, the highest level of local travel advisory, during which travel may be restricted to emergency management workers only. As that term is defined in IC 10-14-3-3, the term includes a volunteer health practitioner registered under IC 10-14-3.5. During all warning, all persons are called upon and directed to refrain from all travel, to comply with necessary emergency measures, to cooperate with public officials and disaster service forces in executing emergency operations plans, and to obey and comply with the lawful directions of properly identified officers. All public officers and employees of Warwick County are hereby designated as emergency management workers for the duration of this emergency, but are hereby directed to limit their travel to that which is essential to the discharge of their public safety and essential service duties. Such employees are also hereby directed to exercise the utmost diligence in the discharge of duties required of them for the duration of the emergency and an execution of emergency laws, regulations, and directives, state and local. In accordance with IC 10-14-3-29.5A3 and IC 10-14-3-29D, this declaration does not prohibit emergency management workers, as defined in IC 10-14-3-3, individuals engaged in employment necessary to maintain a safe rail system, restore public utility, or provide any other emergency public service from traveling within the county during this local disaster emergency. All operating forces will direct their communications and request for assistance in operations directly with Warwick County Emergency Operating Center. References hereby made to all appropriate laws, statutes, ordinances, and resolutions, and particularly to sections 10-14-3-5.5, 10-14-3-29, and 10-14-3-29.5 of the Indiana Code. Page two. Under IC 10-14-3-29.5, there are three travel advisories, advisory levels. If the Emergency Management Agency Director or the Principal Executive Office of a political subdivision determines that conditions within the political subdivision have created the need for travel advisory restrictions within a local disaster emergency declaration, the Emergency Management Agency Director or the Principal Executive Officer may issue an advisory or a watch level travel advisory. A warning level of travel advisory may be issued only after a local disaster emergency is declared under IC 10-14-3-29. Advisory is the lowest level of local travel advisory. It means that the routine travel or activities may be restricted in areas because of hazardous situations. Citizens should use caution or avoid these areas. Schools and businesses may begin to implement their emergency action plans. Watch means the conditions are threatening to the safety of the public, only essential travel is recommended, for example, to and from work, emergency situations, et cetera. Emergency action plans have been or should now be implemented by businesses, schools, government agencies, and other organizations. The Emergency Management Agency Director or the Principal Executive Officer of a political subdivision may determine that conditions within the political subdivision have created the need for travel advisory restrictions without a local disaster emergency being declared under IC 10-14-3-29. The Emergency Management Agency Director or the Principal Executive Officer may issue travel advisory restrictions, but such restrictions shall be limited to the travel advisory levels, advisory, and watch. Warning means that the travel may be restricted to emergency personnel only. During a warning emergency, all citizens are called upon and directed to refrain from all travel, to comply with necessary emergency measures, to cooperate with the public officials and disaster services, forces, in executing emergency operations plans, and to obey and comply with the lawful directions of properly identified officers. Under IC 10-14-3-29.5D, further and more specific restrictions may be included in a warning, local travel advisory. IC 10-14-3-29 states that a local disaster emergency declaration may not be continued or renewed for more than seven days, except by or with the consent of the governing body of a political subdivision. This declaration shall be given prompt in general publicity and shall be filed promptly in the office of the county clerk. It is witness whereof, I have hereunto set my hand the 7th day of September, 2025. Right into the record. Galactico, when I'm phobia reading out loud in third grade. And comments from the public? I have Randy Lemons.
Thank you, commissioners, for hearing me on short notice. I know I wasn't on your agenda, but I appreciate you listening to me. My wife and I would live in paradise. Tell people out of town where you live, say you're in paradise, they really like that.
I bet.
Actually, I was raised in paradise. Went to the golf course back in the 50s. What I'm here today for, we bought a new townhome on Mica Drive on the corner of Park Lake, okay, where the Liberty Credit Union is, and the dead end street down to where the car wash is at. First of all, I want to thank Mike Wilder for his cooperation. I've called their office several times about speeders. We get kids coming down there, not just kids. I mean, I've seen Mustangs, I've seen even a Ferrari a couple of times. By the time they leave the bank to the time they get to the car wash, they're doing 70 miles an hour. I've got videos of this. The sheriff has set numerous squad courts out there to control it, but he's only got limited resources, and he does everything he can to help, and I really appreciate that. So what I would like to have done is, I'm requesting, the town of Newburgh, they put in a speed bump. Okay? Now, these cars that come down this road are pretty low-profile, and they don't want to get their cars destroyed. If we had some sort of a speed bump, like to put in at Newburgh, between, okay, on the corner from Mica, where we're at, to the other side of the street, which is on the bank's parking lot, to that area, that separates pretty much from the bank to the car wash. And that would pretty much take care of the situation of the speeders, because they're not going to get, they don't want to get their cars destroyed. It's a very simple fix. I know Newburgh's, the ones that Newburgh put in has been very, very effective.
What is the distance?
About 25 feet. 25, 30 feet maybe.
The road distance is about 600 feet. Yeah, I think she's talking about the length that they're.
From point A to point B.
Probably less than an eighth of a mile. What would you say, Sheriff, you know that area?
Bobby said 600 feet.
About 600 feet? Like I say, when they come down through their flying. Now, we're pretty much a retired community. My wife and I are both retired. Most of us in this new subdivision, in these townhomes, but we have grandkids. And we've had our grandkids go out there and play. I know it's hard to control a child when they're playing in the yard, not to run out in the street. Okay, but if one of our kids ran out in the street, and those cars come, the sheriff would be there with the coroner. Absolutely. Because, and with all the patrols he does, he can't. Because, and it, with all the, the patrols he does, he can't be there 24 hours a day. But like I said, he does a great job. So if we could, uh, uh, I'm, I'm applying to the commissioners to do something about possible, some sort of a speed control. Now, you do, you did put up a s, a small speed limit sign right nearby the bank where it says, uh, no outlet. And they put a little, a little small one, about this big, but it's in yellow. It says 20 miles per hour. Okay, it's, it's kind of hard to see. If they could put up a regular white speed limit sign of 20 miles an hour, and that's what, that's what they posted, I would definitely appreciate that. That would be more visible, or, because they can't, well, I didn't see the sign. You know, it's yellow, it's up high. That's a simple fix. Okay, uh, and then also, uh, on, on this, on the same street, on the parking, it's a small width street. And every once in a while, some of the, I'm sorry, I've taken up your time here, but, uh, some of the, uh, some of the residents, every once in a while will park cars on that street for three, four, five, six days at a time. Okay? It's, it's going to cause a wreck. If, if there's any way we could even have just no parking sign, say overnight parking, not just no parking, but overnight parking. That would keep them from parking there all the time. On the west side of the street. That would be, that would be just excellent. And that would be from, uh, the Liberty Bank down to the car wash.
And there are no front, there are no homes up front right there.
Well, our, our side yards are right there on it, yeah. Uh, of course, Micah, uh, I can't think of any.
So where are they going when they park there?
Uh, they're walking up to the, uh, walking up to the, uh, either over to the banquet or, uh, well, we got one, I'm not going to go into details about her. But, uh, that would be for another commissioner's office. But, uh, they'll park their car, they, they own. I think you know who I'm talking about.
I know.
His mind's.
Just dogs ring, ring the bell?
I do.
Thank you. But, uh, they've got like eight or nine cars and they park three or four of them, uh, three at their house. And sometimes I'll park them out there. The sheriff had to have two of them towed one time because they were out there forever. You know, if, if we could just get a, uh, no overnight parking sign. I know I'm asking a lot, but you know, we, we're, we're trying to make our neighborhood livable. We really, and we paid a lot of money for our property and, and we maintain our properties. And thank you for remembering the dogs.
My sister lives there. Yeah, I think.
Oh, yes, 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 okay. So she knows exactly what I'm talking about. So, uh, let's see. Oh, and then the last thing on my list would be the S-curves on Park Place that going toward Walmart. Okay, I've got a video on my phone. I've almost got hit, head on. Several times, uh, what was it?
Two weeks ago.
Two weeks ago. A car was coming down there probably 40, 45 mile an hour, and they cut across the WLI.
Well, you have to to go that fast right there, right? I said you'd have to to go that fast.
Exactly, and they are. I got a video on my phone right now that one of them, I had to jump the curb on my, on my new car. Ruined a couple of wheels, get up in the, the grass, not be a head-on collision. Okay, signage there would be, you know, slowed down for the S-curves or something. And then the commissioners also helped me about, uh, two, three years, about striping all that. And that, that, that really, really helped. But those stripes are really wearing off. If that could just be restripped. And that, that's awareness is all it is. And, and that's, that's basically, uh, basically what I'm, what I'm up there for. Yeah, we talked, I, I think, maybe you talked.
Several times.
But you can inform them what I was talking about.
Bobby, is there any traffic incident on that, like on that S-curve? I mean, there's obviously more traffic today than there was.
Oh, three times, four times.
And this is the S-curve west of the, the gym?
Yes.
Yeah.
Where the, what is that little restaurant there?
Maya, Maryad.
Maryad, yeah.
We did receive another, um, complaint about that S-curve. I've got to look up the lady that had called. She's been to the meeting before. I'll, I'll have to look at, think of this minute.
All the games getting striping and some signage. It had some. I thought it had some 20 mile an hour signs for the, on the curve sign itself. It says 20, but we can try to highlight that or something.
Give it some eyes and some attention.
Or have somebody sitting out there with a doozy. I'm only kidding. Only kidding. Or, or am I?
Or are you?
Oh. I'll take any questions you all have. I'll be happy.
I think he's making a list.
I'm making a list. We'll get a list together, see what I could do on, I can get some signage taken care of, some striping taken care of, and then we'll look at the rest.
Pay some attention to it, for sure.
I'm sorry, Sheriff.
Pay some attention to it, for sure.
I, I really appreciate it. Like I said, uh, I, I wouldn't have come up here, but it, it's getting to the point now that it's, it's ridiculous. Uh, I'm a, a Warwick County, Warwick County man, born and raised here, and I just want to keep it happening.
Thank you.
Thank you very much.
Thank you so much for your time. And I have Ashley Hagan.
Great job, I wish. I'm not sure what to do, so just tell me what I need to do.
State your name for the record.
It's Ashley Hagan. And I'm here today to ask for some help. I have a landlord that refuses to fix anything. The owner lives out in California and doesn't care. Um, I have an issue when we had that bad ice storm in January, it did something to my furnace. You cannot use the thermostat, you cannot control the temperature, you have to turn it on and off. I have been to, uh, the trustee's office. Chad is related to me, so I asked him. He just kept saying, call the landlord, call the landlord. I'm like, Chad, it's not working. They have a contract with a AC guy, but he also has his own business. That guy has said he'll be there, and I can't tell you how many times he's not showed up. And I've waited until 7:30 or 8:00 for him to show up, and then by that time, I know he's not going to. I'm here for help. I have tried three lawyers. I have tried the trustee's office. We have nothing in Warwick County to protect us from the slum lords. We have nothing. I was, I was a, I was born in Evansville, but I'm the same way with him. I've lived here almost all my life. And, you know, I talked to the, um, the housing authority in Evansville, and they're like, well, you could try this. I tried that. It didn't work. I'm just here for something. I need something because I am about to go nuts.
How long have you lived there? Is it a home or?
I, it's an apartment. It used, it's Creekside Apartments. It used to be called Tudor Manor years ago.
And how long have you been there?
I've been there two years. And I know everybody says if you're unhappy, move. I don't have the kind of money to move. I don't have good credit. And so, yes, I'm looking for something else, but I was behind in my rent and my family helped me get it caught up, so I thought, oh, they're going to fix my furnace. No. To turn my furnace on, I have to go to the breaker box, turn it off, turn it on. I refuse to let it run all day while I'm gone. I just need some help.
I mean, our building commission would be.
I tried that, they told me they don't get involved.
Did you talk to, did you talk to the building commissioner, the building?
No, I did not talk to a commissioner. Whoever answered their messages told me that someone gave me wrong information and they can't help me.
Was it a lady or a man?
Uh, lady.
See, you've, you've talked to the.
I've talked to the landlord.
Talked to the trustee, you've talked to some attorneys.
Yes.
On some level, it's a civil issue, right?
I've, uh, my dad was telling me to reduce my rent. If I do that, I will be evicted. She's not, she's still expecting $900 every month, but, uh, besides the furnace, uh, the drains are so old, I guess, that everything is backed up in my sinks. The very first time it had it, I had a waterfall going over all the counter onto my sofa, my reclining sofa. I mean, just like a water fountain, it was, I had the maintenance guy from upstairs run downstairs, try to help me. We were constantly going like this, and she tried to blame me because it had, it was grease. I don't cook. I'm not home. I work two jobs.
Is your, is your main issue your HVAC system?
Our main, our maintenance guys are just people off the street that know a little bit enough to get it off, but no, they have a contract with the AC guy. His name was Derek. He's got his own business. I don't know the name of it. But I called her today to say, hey, can I get an update? Yeah, he's supposed to be there and, uh, get yours. There was a guy that lives diagonal. He hasn't had AC for three months.
Tried to call another HVAC contractor on your own?
Yes, but then I'd have to pay for it, which I even thought about doing, but then my mom and dad were saying that looks like I was the one that broke it. They don't know a lot about this, just like I don't know a lot about this. And the only reason I'm here is because I just wanted to get it out there, that people like me that can't afford anything are stuck with landlords that don't want to fix anything. Or owners, because when I talked to the trustee's office, I talked to that lady that handles everything, and she told me that they have had complaints for years with, uh, Charlene, I think is her name, Carlene. Anyway, they've had issues with her not wanting to fix anything. And if I would have known that it was Tudor Manor before, I would have never moved in because I remember as a kid growing up, my dad telling me, don't go in that area.
Is that in Newburgh?
That's in Newburgh. It's right next to Newburgh Healthcare or Riverwind Apartments.
Did you try calling the Indiana Housing Community Development?
I did, uh, I did call, uh, 211, and someone gave me legal aid.
No, this, this is an agency of the state of Indiana that usually helps renters. They help, uh, they do, like, help first-time homeowners. They do rental assistance. They do, um, code enforcement items for renters. I don't know if that'll help you. I used to do grant work with them, but I could try to.
Yeah, I'll try.
Give you that and try to call them and see if there's anything they can do to get involved for fair housing.
Well, see, and the thing is, on our lease, it doesn't say anything about who's responsible for the furnace.
So, so I just want to clarify.
Yes.
So we know what we're looking at.
Yes.
The furnace works. You get, you have heat and you have air. You just have to manually.
I don't have air.
You don't have air conditioning.
No, it's been broke for three months.
Okay.
I had to stay at my mom and dad's for three month, or three months, three days when we had, a few weeks ago, had that hot weather. And I've got pictures on my phone, there was 84 degrees in my apartment, and I come home and I'm burning up and.
Furnace works. It just, there's a disconnect between the thermostat.
Yes, it's the relay is what I was told.
Okay.
The AC guy has it, but just hasn't been there to fix it. But, you know, I'm used to getting tired of it. I thought about calling like Borman and Sons, but I don't have that kind of money to fix it.
Ashley, we've, we've got some, we've got some ideas of maybe some other people to call, but let us, let us make some phone calls.
That's fine, great.
Bet them out just a little bit before we just send John at wild goose chase, and we can follow up with you. Is your phone number on here?
Yes.
Yes.
We can follow up with you and see if we can find you some resources.
Thank you so much. You don't really, guys, you don't realize this. I'm just getting it out because I personally think Warwick County needs something to protect, because like I said, I'm not the only one.
Okay. We'll get hold of you.
Thank you so much.
Thank you. Anything else? I'm going to take a motion.
Motion to adjourn.
Second, all in favor?
Aye.